Come on Dick, go join him.
All days I forget a few things. I forgot a person who served for this city many years was a teacher at the middle school who passed away and they had to find out his name Ted Curios who taught social studies for over thirty years or whatever he rolled us out.
... The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Earl's.
Present.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Present.
Counselor Hirsav.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Counselor Jones.
Present.
Counselor Sullivan.
Present.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Conlon.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Darvin.
Present.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. President, I've been requested to ask that we're certain no one has turned off as opposed to on the mic. Mics. If your mics, check your mics, make sure you're not muted. Some issues in the past. Thank you.
Any late filed items?
There are two, Mr. President. The councils will see on their desk, there is a one called Pedal the Court. And that is Communication Number 11. And then there is also a Housekeeping Matter Committee Item Rule 18A. Should have been in the packet as a committee item, yet it was not. Those two items are on your desk.
Motion to suspend the rules, so the late files might be accepted.
Serving the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Public comment.
Paul Dunn. Maddie Dunn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Paul Dunn, 343 High Street, and my daughter Madeline Dunn. We're here to present to you a concept that my daughter came up with to help raise awareness and to raise support of the Genie Geiger Youth Prevention Program. And in a nutshell, the idea is that the kids' fundraiser would be located on the rail trail and has a Halloween theme to it. So, we're going to get their kids, get kids into their outfits, have them show off, run basically from Cashman Park up to the High Street, the Overpass Bridge, on the rail trail, and then back with pumpkins and things of that nature. We started with the spooky rail trail theme, but spooky can be too spooky, so we're thinking pumpkin patch rail trail race. So, huge concept. My daughter's been involved with the Genie Geiger. I myself have helped raise money for the Geiger. I truly believe in their mission and their direction. And we are working with the various groups that are involved, RIT-SAMASCO, LISA with Parks and PALEPA regarding parking down at Cashman. So, that's the concept. And we're here to answer any questions and learn about the process, having not been through this yet.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you for your idea, too. RJ Wolser. And Charles Alkey, you want to come and go?
Hi, good evening. My name's RJ Wolser. I do health and safety at Storm Chemicals in the industrial park. We are agenda item number seven, the first one. We wanted to be able to come here to answer any questions that you may have for flammable liquid and flammable solid license for a facility that we're renovating at Six Mallway. The license that we currently have goes with a parcel on Seven Mallway. So, what we want to do is move some of our hazardous chemicals to the new facility that is redesigned and built. So, we need to apply for a license. And we just wanted to be able to come to answer any questions that you guys have. And hopefully, if you could, if you push this forward, there's really been waiting on this to work, get into building permit, and go through the steps on to the next phase of the renovation.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the August 12, 2013 meeting. There are nine communications, two have been removed. The first communication is this very same application we just spoken about, which is combustible liquids. That is to be referred to license and permits. The next is the local sports one-half marathon, November 3, 2013, to public safety. Third is a block party for Beck Street at Federal to ship September 14, 2013, to be approved. Fourth is Mayor's Correspondence regarding the Teamsters Administrative Assistance Agreement. That's to be referred to Budget and Finance. The fifth, Mayor's Correspondence Regarding Middle Street Has Been Removed At The Request Of Counselor Cronin, Taken Up In The Communication Section. Sixth, FY 2013 Year End Budget Report To Budget And Finance. Seventh, CPC Memo Regarding Project Number Eight Frog Pond Restoration Modification, Again To Budget And Finance. Eighth Has Been Removed At The Request Of Counselor Cronin, Compass Auto Works. Nine, Spooky, that will be taken up in the regular agenda. Nine, Spooky Rail Trail Halloween Kids Fund Race, October 27, 2013, To Be Referred To Public Safety. There are five first reading appointments. First is Paul D. Bertrand, One Mosley Place To The New Report Trust Fund Until September 30, 2016. Second, Malcolm Carnway, 22 Strong Street To The Historic Commission, September 30, 2015. Third, Craig Goodrich, 3 Dell Logan Drive Salisbury, Special Police Officer. Fourth, Alan M. McGuire, 15 Lincoln Avenue, Special Police Officer. And a reappointment, Julie Langaron, 13 Cushing Street Salisbury, Treasurer Until August 30, 2013. And that is the consent agenda. Counselor Earl's. Who would like to remove Communication Number Seven, please, from the consent agenda? That would be 1-5-7 are pulled out? Thank you.
5, 7, and 8.
5, 7, and 8.
5, 7, and 8.
5, 7, and 8.
Yep. 1. Sorry.
5, 7, and 8.
Anything else? Motion to approve the amendment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Consent agenda passes. Move on to the regular agenda. And the mayor's gonna have a proclamation in the spirit of camaraderie with what's coming up in the next few weeks. I'd like Counselor Earl's and Counselor Sullivan to go to Mayor's, please.
That's for who?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, should do a video.
Please rise to the mayor, please. Yes, it's not up here, so I guess you got it. You sit down, please. Thank you. I guess she didn't shake my hand. I guess she wasn't happy to go in there. It's gotta happen.
May I, although you can come stand with me, please?
Youth. Don't be you.
I'd like to introduce Andy, I'd like to direct the view services.
This evening, we're very excited. We have members of the youth council here with us who have been working tirelessly on several campaigns. Many of you have seen the "I Support Ya" signs out and about, mixed in with the candidate signs. And just to take a moment and explain what that is, this month, we are doing a visibility campaign to increase the community's awareness of the 40 assets, youth assets. That's what the "Ya" stands for. And our goal is to continue to be a community that values young people and that not just values them, but shows them. We have a survey that showed that only forty, I believe forty-two percent of young people felt that community valued youth. And so, this is our effort to raise awareness and let people show the young people that they do support them. So, homes have put up the yard signs, and we have many businesses that are putting the logo up in their window as well.
Thank you, Andy. And so now, the proclamation. Whereas, young people under age eighteen comprise twenty percent of Newburyport's population, representing tomorrow's leaders, parents, and entrepreneurs, who need to be equipped with the skills and values to be part of a vital workforce which this state's future growth and success depend. And whereas, evidence from research supports positive youth development, principles and strategies for maximizing the strengths and potential of today's youth, health and education. And whereas, there's a growing need to move away from traditional risk reduction and categorical approaches, moving towards cross-system partnering and positive youth development approaches. And whereas, positive youth development approach is asset-focused, viewing youth as promising resources to be understood and developed, rather than problems to be fixed. And whereas, positive youth development approach provides a framework to prevent unhealthy, risky behaviors, improve the health and well-being of all youth, regardless of race, ethnicity, and status and community, including those with special needs. And whereas, Newburyport has established the Beacon Coalition to be a community that welcomes values and empowers youth through meaningful opportunities and a collaborative effort to support and strengthen youth assets. And whereas, all Newburyport residents share a responsibility to love, value, nurture, listen, and encourage youth, and therefore fitting to support the goals of this observance which seeks to ensure the future of our youth, promoting their development into productive, healthy citizens who contribute in positive ways to our society. Now therefore, I, Donna D. Holiday, Mayor of the City of Newburyport, do hereby proclaim September as Youth Development Month in the City of Newburyport, given under my hand and seal, this 29th day, no, this ninth day of September 2010, Donna D. Holiday.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thank you. You want the transfers? First transfer is Mayor's Department from General Administration, compensated abscences $390,810 to reserve appropriation compensated abscences, same amount.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. You want the communication? Communication five.
What, when did Counselor Earl's pull up?
Seven, right? Counselor Earl's, you'll pull seven out. Counselor Cronin, pull five out. I think five would be first.
Counselor five, yeah.
That is a memo from the mayor to present members of the city council regarding 42-44 Middle Street. I'd like you to read the first part of it in reference to the attached letter dated August 26, regarding sidewalk repair. In above caption, please be advised that the Director of the Department of Public Services, Tony Fanari, has been directed to gather information as to the cost, when repairs can be made, and how long it will take to repair this sidewalk. As you are well aware, many sidewalks in your report are in great disorder. And since we have increased sidewalk funding by 600% over the past three years, with a percentage from the meals tax revenue, my office and the Department of Public Services continue to do our utmost to repair and maintain all of our community's sidewalks. And attached is a letter from Lisa Fontis, 42-44 Middle Street, and some photographs, it looks like. Mr. Wilson-Peltier.
May I just address this, Mr. President? Before I ask this to be received and filed and to continue down the path that is suggested on the cover page, I would just like to bring to the council's attention, as well as the public's attention, that I received an email Friday regarding that dirt, a flowable fill that was used as a stock gap measure around some of our shade trees. The house in question, a sixth-generation Newburyporter, by the way, has, is just totally frustrated that this dirt is now tracking to his home. It's a disrepair. It's just a situation that's not working. So, I would ask that DPS also look at alternative methods of fixing sidewalks so they're safe to walk on and they aren't adversely affecting the property that are next to these dirt sidewalks.
It's Communication, which should the council?
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We want that Communication seven. That is also a memo from Michael De Sette, Chair CPC, to the Honorable City Council, regarding modification of Project Number Eight Frog Pond Restoration at Bartlett Mall. I'm trying to summarize, Mr. President. The, just a bit, I think, is, let me try. At the August 27 meeting of CPC, Walt Thompson, Chair of the Commission, requested a modification to the project, which is currently before you for a final vote, in the recommended amount of $12,000. He requested that the Number Eight proposed order application be modified so that the appropriation may be applied to the project costs associated with the removal of algae from Frog Pond. He explained that the commission has learned that the health of the pond is at immediate, immediate risk due to high levels of bacteria and algae growth. Many events have had to be canceled due to the poor quality of water and potential health risks associated with the accidental injection of the water. And I think that's the gist of it, Mr. President. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Counselor Earl's?
I wanted to pull this out because I didn't want it to be hidden in the consent agenda because it's really, it's a public health issue. I don't want to scare anybody. And I think, I didn't want it hidden. I want to understand what they're doing here. This water is really something that can't be cut. Dogs shouldn't be in it because dogs come in and then bring it back to your house. And when we go into the CPC, I may be doing something fairly unconventional for this council to bring up that this Bartlett Mall needs work now. It is a, I'll say the word, it's a hazard. It's probably one of the worst environmental issues we have in the city. And it's parked. It's not like it's hidden away somewhere. It's in the middle of our city. It's in the middle of a very busy intersection, right near youth services, right near a playground. I think we have to deal with this. And we'll hear more about the CPC idea when it comes up. But I just wanted to pull this out just so we're more aware of this, so it's not just crossed over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Darvin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not that I don't agree with Counselor Earl's, but we have another pressing issue in the city as well. That's called the Crow Lane landfill. And we'll talk about that. But as I was attending yesterday's Field of Honor, the wind was blowing across that, and you could have sworn that you were at the wastewater treatment facility. It is in very, very bad shape. It's green. It smells. So, I agree with Counselor Earl's on that point, that it needs some immediate attention right away.
Thank you. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Communication eight. Number eight is a letter from Renee Wheeler to Robert J. Cronin and the City Council City New Report, regarding request to move our business sign to the beginning of New Pasture Road. Dear Mr. Cronin...
Motion to refer to license and permit.
Second the motion.
Discussion, Counselor Cronin.
I'm in receipt of this, this letter. This may or may not actually come under council jurisdiction. I am not sure. But what I am sure of is that Compass Auto Works is down on six New Pasture Road. They had a sign out at the head of New Pasture Road for probably the past seven to nine years, which brought walk-in or drive-by customers in for inspection stickers. As a matter of fact, that's how I actually knew they existed, was I got an inspection sticker down there. That sign has been removed for cars. But the issue now stands that this business is suffering greatly. In their business model, which changed, is more consumer-oriented towards inspection stickers. So, while I think that we should be business-friendly and we have to do something for these, for these folks, to allow them to continue with their business and actually service the community by providing an inspection station, we also have to act, Tempest Fugit here. Every day that these folks don't get walk-in businesses, they're taking money, you know, you're taking money out of, out of their mouths. They're here tonight with their child. They just want some resolution. You can look in some of the examples around town, and I don't want to get into those at this point, but there are certainly examples, perhaps we grandfather them, perhaps we do something, I don't know, but we have to come up with a solution to, to be, to allow businesses to succeed in this community.
Counselor Earl's?
I understand this issue very all too well. We're getting into zoning issues here where we have an off-premise sign. I don't know if the city council has a lot of jurisdiction here. I will work on it. There will be no quick answers, unfortunately. I don't think there's anything the council can really do. If we start accepting an off, a temporary sandwich-type sign here, I believe that's what we're talking about, right? A sandwich-type sign? That we're gonna be having a lot of applicants come from all over town looking to put things on roads away from the business. That said, I think it might be maybe faster, perhaps faster, to apply for an off-premise sign, a permanent sign at this intersection, and go through the zoning that way. I would encourage, even though I will take this up on my spread, I would encourage the applicant, the petitioner, to head in that direction, to go to the zoning, board appeals, and ask for an off-premise sign. I believe that will be the cap. But we'll talk off on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hirsav?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an observation. My memory serves when licensing permits and city councils as a whole talked about A-frames a couple of years ago. There was an idea that came forward, and I don't recall who brought it forward. It might have been the chamber, it might have been someone else. I know I've seen this idea in the city of Northampton, where it's the beginning of streets. You have basically a, an F, if you will. We have a big pole, and then you have a bunch of, a bunch of, you know, signs jutting off of it, and those signs are pointing to businesses down that street. We talked about it, I believe, on Middle Street. And this could be a similar idea. We could talk about it down in the vicinity of New Pasture for the committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Communication ten. To whom it may concern, we at the Black Dog have partnered with One Tail at a Time Local Dog Shelter, and would like to hold a very small-scale dog walk September 14, 2013. Where this is our first dog walk, we aren't exactly sure how many walkers and dogs will show up. We're hoping that each walker will make a donation towards the shelter. The walk will start and end at the Black Dog with a small display of dogs that are up for adoption back at the store. Please feel free to contact me if you should have any questions or concerns. Thank you, Marilyn Manning, the manager of the Black Dog. There's also a map showing the route, and there, and that looks like it, Mr. President.
Move to receive and file. Well...
I think it's in five days, right?
Mm-hmm.
We have... We don't have a route here, do we? They do. If I, if I could, Mr. President, it looks to me, when she brought it in, that it uses a lot of the Waterfront Trust property, but it also goes on the city sidewalks through the square. Counselor Earl's?
I guess I would agree with the receiving file because I'm not sure what jurisdiction the city really has. This is a relative informal event. They're walking dogs. They're not closing streets. They're not, they're staying on sidewalks. They are using NRA land. As the clerk said, so I'm not sure what we have jurisdiction here. I don't, I don't really see it. So, I'd say receive and file with the NRA. It's okay with using their land. I think that's a worthy event.
Second the motion. Any further discussion, receiving file? Counselor Paul?
Yes, I guess I should direct this toward the clerk. Did these people approach you with this plan? And if so, obviously, they're expecting donations from dog walkers. But I'm a little bit concerned, since these dogs can be walked about downtown, if the dogs make donations of another type, and they're making donations to those.
There's no discussion, Counselor, about those donations.
You're volunteering for the dogs.
And it, it came in after the last meeting, and their first attempt, and I think they're trying to do the right thing. And they're using the city sidewalk, so that was, I think, the reason it's here. Clearly, the Waterfront Trust, it looks like they're going around NRA property. Waterfront Trust should look at it, I would think. Maybe the city sidewalk is our only concern. The motion is to receive and file. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We want to appointments. That's it? Miss Paul? Oh, federal port. I didn't get a copy of that, sorry. I can listen to your expert reading. I know you meant that. Okay, seven eleven. Dear City Council, in effort to make Newburyport a more bike-friendly community, the City of Newburyport Riverside Cycles and Small Solutions Big Ideas is hosting a first-ever bike festival on Sunday, September 22. At the mall, we are asking for your support for this event. This event will feature 2.5 family ride on the bike path, 10-mile ride around the city with drinks and snack stops, a free bike repair clinic, toddler tri-track race, bike safety rodeo, bike decoration contest with prizes from Metro Rock, YWCA, swim passes, orange leaf gift cards, music from Evolvement Radio and Kind Bars, Vita Coco, and Amazing Wheatgrass giveaways, to name a few. Event begins at 10:00 a.m. on High Street at the mall.
I will move to approve contingent on approval by the Bartlett Mall Commission.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Earl's?
The petitioner has actually informed me that the Bartlett Mall Commission approves of this event, so I don't think we're in any danger of stepping on any toes. Thank you.
At least I have the water.
Right.
Right. Pumping up in the mall. Counsel Cronin.
I would just ask that there's an insurance binder on this, if this is going to be an organized event in town.
In conjunction with private equity.
We actually, at this point, the, we are not charging for it, which means that it's under the recreational statute. It's not your own, you know, bike at your own risk. They are taking donations, but people are not charging for it, so it would fall under the prevy of the Mass Recreation Statute. So... Are there any other questions about it?
Counsel Hirsaw.
Thank you. Not a question to Ms. Egmont, but just as a side note, later tonight, the council will see a resolution regarding September 22nd of the car-free day, so this fits in nicely, and I thank you for bringing this forward.
Excellent. I also do want to point out that our public nurse, Pam Palumbo, is the one who designed that amazing logo. I don't know where else she'll get credit, so I've just decided this was the best.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No seat carries. Now we move to appointments.
Second reading, first appointment is tabled. It's Paul Hogg, Four Colton Drive, as the Newburyport Shellfish Constable until July 1st, 2016.
Motion to remove from the table?
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion to table.
Motion to approve for the purpose of discussion.
Let's second that. Counsel Earl.
Here's a conundrum. While we have not passed the Shellfish Management Plan yet, if I tabled it again, we wouldn't be able to discuss anything. So the reason I'm rising is to be able to discuss and say, because we have not passed the Shellfish Management Plan, there's really no reason to do this appointment. Can this appointment, if we pass the plan tonight, could the appointment happen next meeting? That's what I propose happening. So we'll be tabled to the next meeting, is my proposal. I'm not tabling it out to allow more discussion, so it's still under approval.
Counsel Connell.
As an alternative, perhaps a friendly amendment to that suggestion, at the discretion of the council president, decide to take it out of order and act upon after the Shellfish ordinance is acted upon.
It can be picked up from, if it's tabled, it can be picked back up, and I'll move to table now.
You can table it again?
Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on. Rest of the appointments.
Jennifer Wilson, 11 Center Street, Cultural Council until August 30th, 2016. Alan Burkhardt, 8 Harrison Street, Cultural Council until August 30th, 2016. Justin Dutcher, 45A Washington Street, reappointment to the Harbor Commission, September 1st, 2015. And James Cassidy, 72 Spring Street, Sealer of Weights and Measures.
Motion approved collectively.
Second the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Counsel Earl.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsaw.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Darvin.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Move on to orders. Order number one. Order number one reads as follows.
Motion to table.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Orders table. Order two.
Order number two reads as follows. September 9, 2013, that the city of Newburyport shall hereby refrain from lending, selling, licensing, or allowing the use of the seal of the city of Newburyport, or the phrase "city of Newburyport," to the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority without the approval of a majority of the City Council of the city of Newburyport. Submitted Counsel Robert J. Cronin.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Cronin.
We've, I think anyway, discussed this out in our last meeting. We're referring to a decision from K and P. This is much clearer. It also allows the fears of, one council had said he would approve this if it were NRA-specific. It is now. This is cleaner, neater, shorter, so I urge approval.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
To approve order number two. Counsel Earl.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist.
No.
Counsel Hirsaw.
No.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
No, I'm still a yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
My fears have been allayed, yes.
Counsel Connell.
No.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Darvin.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Order passes.
Motion to remove order number one from the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive a file. Second. All in favor of receiving file?
Aye.
Opposed? See him fine. Thank you. Resolution three.
Resolution to mark World Car-Free Day, whereas the city of Newburyport is transit-friendly with biking and walking infrastructure connected to an accessible multimodal public transportation regional network, and whereas a special day to discover the city without a car can build community by educating us about our transportation options, environmental impacts, and other quality of life issues that are within our control, and whereas World Car-Free Day is an annual celebration of cities and public life, free from the noise, stress, and pollution of cars, and it is marked on September 22nd in 1,500 cities in 40 countries around the globe to promote the environmental, financial, communal, and health benefits of using public transportation, carpooling, vanpooling, bicycling, walking, and teleworking, teleworking, excuse me. And whereas the Massachusetts Department of Transportation will celebrate Massachusetts Car-Free Week from September 16th to the 22nd, 2013, as an extension of World Car-Free Day, and be it resolved that the city, the Newburyport City Council commemorates World Car-Free Day by declaring Sunday, September 22nd, 2013, to be Newburyport Car-Free Day for the second consecutive year, and calls for a voluntary pledge from residents to be car-free one or more days every month. Submitted Counsel REB Hirsaw.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. Counsel Hirsaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. The language of this resolution is taken pretty much word for word from a resolution I sponsored one year ago. The only change is really is changing some paragraphs around. Given that earlier tonight, of course, we heard from Ms. Egmont about a bike festival happening at Bartlett Mall on the 22nd, it, you know, it once again fits in nicely, and I urge and encourage other groups around the city to consider maybe holding something else on the 22nd, whether at their own, their own locations or wherever it might be. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No seat carries. Order four.
That the City Council of the city of Newburyport approve the Preservation Restriction Agreement for the preservation of historic resources at 36 North Atkinson Street entitled Preservation Restriction Agreement between Janet Al Morris, also known as Janet Morland, Richard Batten Jr., and Patricia A.M. Batten, and the city of Newburyport, by and through the Newburyport Historical Commission, as approved by the Massachusetts Historic Commission and Newburyport Historical Commission. Further, that the mayor and city clerk of the city of Newburyport are hereby authorized to sign said Preservation Restriction Agreement on behalf of the city. Counsel O'Brien, P. Darvin.
Motion to, sent to Planning and Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Darvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought about having this approved tonight, but in the spirit of the rules of the council, it's a 120-page document from the Historical Commission, Massachusetts Historical Commission, so we could get this in and out of Planning and Development as fast as possible. Everything has been approved by the city planning office, the mayor, and Mass Historical Commission, so hopefully we'll just...
Blow right through.
We'll blow right through the 112 pages. Thank you very much.
Who knows what's in it once we pass it?
(laughing). Hey, Congressman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move to order five.
September 9, 2013, that the City Council of the city of Newburyport hereby adopt the March 2013 Housing Production Plan, parentheses Affordable Housing Plan, as prepared by Karen Sonenberg Consulting, Abacus Architects and Planners, the Office of Planning and Development, and the Newburyport Affordable Housing Trust, has a guidance document for implementation of affordable housing initiatives in future years. Jointly submitted, counselors Thomas E. Jones, Barry N. Collin.
I'll move to refer to Planning and Development.
Oh, goodie. I'll second it.
End discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Planning and Development. Order number six. Drain Layer Contractor. I have it, Mr. President. Oh, God, if you need it. I have it right here. I've got one tree.
It's got to wait for me for a minute, sorry. That the City Council of the city of Newburyport approves the following Drain Layer Utility Contractor Application for the 2013 construction year. Kevin J. Greeney Materials and Striking, 107 East Re Road, Newton, Mass. Submitted Counsel REB Hirsaw.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Counsel Darvin.
Thank you. Is that Newton, Mass or Newton, New Hampshire?
New Hampshire.
Newton, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Newton Junction.
Couldn't afford the taxes and...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to ordinances.
This would be a second reading, ordinance number one. Chapter 13, Division 6, stopping and standing, delete 30 minutes with respect to High Street on the northerly side from Ashton Street for a distance of approximately 135 feet between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., except Sundays and holidays, and add two hours to this description. No person shall park a vehicle for longer than two hours between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. of any day except Sundays and holidays in the following described streets or parts thereof. High Street again, again from the northerly side from Ashton Street for a distance of approximately 135 feet, moving in a northwesterly direction. Submitted Counsel Richard E. Sullivan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. President, this is the, this is the second reading, but just to give you a brief synopsis here, I believe it was several years ago Counsel Cameron put it through to change it. There was a different type of business in place at the time. Now we have a hairdressing salon in there, and the time limit, the 30 minutes, was not long enough, so, you know, I would just as soon change it to two hours, so I'll encourage you to vote.
I'd like to know how long Counsel Cameron's hairdressing appointments.
Exactly the same amount of time as yours.
In which case I will...
It could probably take all three of us on the 30-minute limit. Counsel Earl.
As usual, I know it's been sponsored by an at-large, but I always defer when it becomes the part, when it comes to parking, to the ward counselor. That is one of their number-one jobs, so I will defer to the ward counselor.
I miss the barber shop, but I'll support the...
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Approval of ordinance number one, second reading, Counsel Earl.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsaw.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Darvin.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien.
Yes.
Ordinance number two.
Number two again is a second reading. It is Division 4 Stop Intersections, 13-136. Following streets are designated as stop intersections, and vehicles traveling thereon shall come to a complete stop before entering such intersections. Street is Goodwin Avenue. The intersection is southwestbound drivers on Goodwin Avenue at the intersection of Union Street. Submitted Counsel Allison Harquist.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Approve ordinance number two. Counsel Earl.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsaw.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Darvin.
Yes.
Counsel Brian.
Yes.
Ordinance three. Any more to come?
Second reading also, Section 13-174 Parking Limited Generally. Add, no person shall park any vehicle on the following streets and portions thereof during the times indicated below. Hale Street, at the entrances to Little River Nature Trails between dusk and dawn. Dusk and dawn are defined as civil twilight, respectively.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Earl.
Yes.
Counsel Harquist.
Yes.
Counsel Hirsaw.
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counsel Jones.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Darvin.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Ordinance number four.
Ordinance number four is Chapter 2 Administration, Boards and Commissions, Chapter 64, Biannual Report to Be Made. City Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Authorities that are established by ordinance or whose members are confirmed by City Council shall make a biannual report to the Council of all matters coming under its jurisdiction. Submitted Counsel REB Hirsaw.
Motion to refer to General Government and Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Hirsaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee can talk about this in depth, but as brief background, we currently have a long place, we'll talk about it in a moment, that requires department heads to submit annual reports to the city council. That takes place currently during the budget cycles. There are no, at least codified, reports coming to the council that I know of from boards, committees, commissions, and authorities. And so this is just a way of learning, you know, what they're doing, not from reading their minutes, but rather learning kind of like a high-level overview of some of their, you know, accomplishments, if there's any obstacles that we can help them with, and so on and so forth. And, you know, whether it should occur annually, whether it should occur biannually, I think one of those two would be best. Quarterly would be ideal, but that's too much work. I could separately, you know, approach them individually, but, you know, why not make it a council order? That's where I'm coming from.
Further discussion, Counsel Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to discussing this as part of a committee of the whole. I certainly understand the intent is around communication. I do find it a bit ironic that as the council had cut the minute-taking for the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, the historical commission, and I believe the conservation commission, and I'm sure we will be sought, a transfer will be sought after shortly from those, from those bodies, because they won't have the money to pay their minute-takers. If this is in the spirit of communication, I think that's great. If this is in the spirit of cooperating and supporting our boards and commissions, who are all volunteers, I think it's a bit misguided in that attempt to add another duty to boards and commissions that already don't get a lot of support from either the mayor's office, the departments, and the council. I think, you know, we ought to take a step back and try to get some ideas from them, and maybe we could do that, from those different boards and committees. I'll also add another wrinkle in here, and I note the intent of mentioning authorities, and the only two that I can think of are the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, to which we appoint four members, the mayor and the council, and the low, and the... which we appoint four members, the Mayor and the council, and the, you can tell I work in Lowell, the Newburyport Housing Authority, which we appoint four members, one appointed by the Governor's Office. Those are separate authorities. I know that the NRA does have an annual report. I'm not sure what the Housing Authority has, but, you know, they, I think we should, in the spirit of communication, be listening to them, not adding another thing on their checklist to people that are already overworked. And then I think we could fashion something that is productive and communicative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Need to roll call for this?
I'll feed one.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
No. Is that two no's, three no's? Two? Thank you.
No. No. Thank you.
Three no's.
I'm sorry, the third?
Someone behind you.
The guy in your back?
Okay.
Ordinance five.
Ordinance five, September 9, 2013, Administration, Section 129, Annual Departmental Report to Be Made. Each department head shall make a report to the City Council on or before June 30th of each year, in accordance with fiscal year budget reviews, of all matters coming under his or her jurisdiction. Submitted Councillor Ari B. Herso.
I move to waive the rules and approve the first reading.
Councilor Earls up.
Thank you, Mr. President. The law under the books today, this is an amendment, this is not a creation, the law under the books today, Mr. President, is specific that the date says is in September. And looking at it, I was curious why did the September date?
Maybe the federal fiscal year. Maybe the federal fiscal year, October to September.
Perhaps.
That could have been from years ago.
I'm just putting this forward as a housekeeping issue. The, I've been serving in the Budget and Finance Committee for the past four years. We hear every department's report at that point. I've never heard a department report between the start of the fiscal year and September. So if the will of the council is to keep it the same, so be it, but this is, again, just a housekeeping matter to keep it in line with what is currently happening from the executive branch to the City Council.
Any further discussion, Councillor Cameron?
I would just say if currently it says on or before September 30th and they present it to us at the beginning of May, then they're meeting their obligations and we have no need to change it.
Any further discussions? Roll call please.
Motion to waive the rules and approve, order number, ordinance number five, approved for the first reading, you know, given the second reading. Councillor Earls.
Yes.
Councillor Hartquist.
Yes.
Councillor Herso.
Yes.
Councillor Hutchison.
No.
Councillor Jones.
Yes.
Councillor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councillor Cameron.
No.
Councillor Connell.
No.
Councillor Cronin.
Yes.
Councillor Darvin.
Yes.
Councillor Brian.
No.
Leading a supermajority to waive the rules, Mr. President, I think it fails.
Fails, correct. Seven-four. Ordinance six.
Ordinance number six, Chapter 13, Traffic, Division 6, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, 13-171, Service Areas, Add, No person shall park a vehicle other than a commercial vehicle used exclusively for loading and unloading for a period of time longer than one-half hour between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. except Sundays and holidays in the following years. State Street, easterly side in front of the property at 153-155, State Street, for approximately a distance of 65 feet. Submitted Councillor Gregory D. Earls.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Public safety. Ordinance seven.
Got 13, Traffic, Division 6, Stopping, Section 13-180, Resident Parking. Add G2 by adding the following streets, or portions thereof, to Zones 1. State Street, beginning at 184 State Street and proceeding southerly to the end of said State Street on the westerly side. Submitted Councillor Gregory D. Earls.
Motion for public safety.
Second that. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinance eight.
Ordinance eight is a zoning ordinance amendment, Section 3C, Zoning Map. Zoning map shall be amended pursuant to Section 3D changes, such that V1 Zone on Story Avenue be enlarged to include the following four parcels in their entirety.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinance nine.
Again, zoning ordinance amendment, be amended pursuant to 12B, by doing the following to Section 9, non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. I can read it, Mr. President.
Take a motion?
Thank you.
Take a motion?
I'll make the motion to put it in Planning and Development. Now I'll read it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Jones. Ordinance ten.
That was to Planning and Development?
Yes, sir.
Put them on.
Again, zoning ordinance amendment, Section 6, Dimensional Controls, General Regulations, Section L. Submitted Councillor Jones and Conlon.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinance eleven.
Again, zoning ordinance amendment, Section 2, Definitions, Under 3, Under Section 23, Lot Connor, delete the following text.
I'll move to put this in Planning and Development as well.
Good move. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinance twelve.
Ordinance twelve, again, zoning ordinance amendment pursuant to 12B, Personal Wireless Communication Services. I can read this one, under Section 20G, delete the words Districts 11 and 12 from the last sentence and replace said words with the words I1 and I2.
Move to, I'm sorry, move to refer to Planning and Development.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ordinance thirteen.
Again, zoning ordinance amendment, Section 3, Establishment of Districts. There are six new districts, it looks...
And I'll move to refer to Planning and Development.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And last but not least, ordinance fourteen.
Zoning ordinance amendment, again, Plum Island Overlay District. Delete the words, no building permit shall be issued for a lot...
Refer to Planning and Development.
And that refreshments will be served at the seven-hour Planning and Development meeting.
Second.
Second, opposed?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That's it for ordinances. Move on to committee items. Budget and Finance.
Mr. President, a motion to remove from Committee Item Number 2.
Back in the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to just make a couple of introductory remarks. We can handle this in a couple of ways. I know a couple of us are going to recuse ourselves from certain votes, but the Budget and Finance Committee of the Whole met on August 20th. We went through all of these items very extensively with the Community Preservation Committee, and a number of members were there that night, and Mike DeSette and the City's Planning Department led us through that. They did a fantastic job, met quite frequently as they always do, to come up with their decisions, and certainly their board, whose work we really appreciate because they make our work that much easier. We voted on almost all of these. There was one exception where we did not take a vote, and we can talk about that in a few minutes. But we had good participation that night from a number of the entities that are supportive of projects that they had put forward, and I'm sure you've all read the original packet. And again, basically, we approved in committee all of these with the exception of the Newburyport High School Phase 1 and 2, and we can talk about that. So I think it, we could do this either one by one, and I'm going to recuse myself from one of the items. Councillor Earls is going to recuse himself from one. There is additional information, and it was a great discussion, I have to say, that night. I think the, several councillors were in attendance as well, and I think that really helped the discussion that night. So whatever the wish of the council may be, and we could, we can move through these pretty quickly.
Which one are you going to recuse yourself, just take this out right now?
I'm going to recuse myself from number three.
Motion to approve number three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
You can sit back down now.
Which one are you going to recuse yourself from?
Motion to approve item seven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Anyone else want to discuss any? One individual?
There is one individual. Thank you, Mr. President, and certainly we'd be welcome to take those. I know the superintendent is here, and perhaps that's for us to get a little bit more information on the high school restoration project, but I don't know how to handle this procedurally, but there was a letter submitted by the Community Preservation Committee about the same amount of funding, but a slight change in the use, and that was for the Bartlett Mall Committee. Their original proposal, they were able to find some funding for that, and it would be a slight shift in use, to use that $12,900. And again, we heard a little bit about that earlier in tonight's committee meeting, or tonight's City Council meeting, that would be, that would be used...
Number eight.
In number eight for, that $12,000, excuse me, I said $12,900, that was the original request, but the approval from the CPC was for $12,000, for that to be used on that algae removal, and so...
If I could speak to that, I've been attending some of their meetings and being in touch with them a little bit, given that it's in my order to be a natural fit. What they're looking to do is they're prioritizing, and as they prioritize, they're finding people who aren't willing to fund, so there's an overlap of where they receive CPA funding, but private donors want to fund a specific item. So what they're looking for, to make it all legal, is to word it now, so they're actually asking for the same amount, but to put it on their priority list where it fits now, because they ask for things which were specifically covered by private donors. So it's the same money, it's just a different use.
Councillor Jones.
Mr. President, procedurally, it would be best to move to accept Proposal 8 with amendment as referred in letter that is now tabled. So I think we can refer, I think we can refer it to the table and then pick it off, pick the communication off the table after we take the vote.
Councillor Earls up.
Point of order, Mr. President, considering I'm wearing a microphone, I'm talking to the people of Newburyport, we're talking about numbers. I see what numbers we're talking about. People don't know what numbers we're talking about. I kindly ask that perhaps a clerk or someone could, you know, at least have a brief line of what we're talking about.
It said Bartlett Mall, $12,000.
Yep.
I heard that very clearly. And that's the only one we're talking about at present time. Go ahead.
This is Project 8, Project Summary. Bartlett Mall is visited by thousands of people year-round. Frog Pond, center of the park, is an ancient kettle hole left behind by glaciers. Unfortunately though, named Frog Pond, there are no frogs living in it due in part to the high levels of algae. CPA funding will contribute to the total project cost associated with ridding the pond of the algae, which will improve the health of the pond for both wildlife and for the community. Health of the pond is at immediate risk due to high levels of bacteria and algae growth. Community events have had to be canceled due to the poor quality of the water and the potential health risks associated with the accidental ingestion of the water. Improving the health of the pond is an integral part of preserving the historical and recreational integrity of the mall.
So procedurally, whatever Councillor Jones said.
I'm seconding it.
There you go.
All in favor?
Move as amended.
Move as amended.
Move as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Let's prove correct? Because why don't we just go through, number one, Rail Trail, try to get through these quick? Instead of doing all the regular... Rail Trail Phase 2, CPC recommends $100,000. The motion?
To approve.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Number two, Housing Rehab. Requested amount $125,000. Category, Community Housing and Historic Resource.
Move to approve.
No, so, not yet. CPC recommended $75,000.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Number four, Joplin Park Renovation Phase 2. Requested amount $40,000. Open space recreation. CPC recommends $20,000.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Number five, Cherry Hill Soccer Field. Requested amount $200,000. Recreation amount, recommended $50,000.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Atwood Park...
Nay.
One nay.
One nay.
Atwood Park Improvement. $40,000 recreation. $20,000.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. I just wish the council let me speak. Grew up in that neighborhood, and I'm going through all the, what the, they want to do. I didn't see anything for a basketball court. I didn't see anything for playground equipment. We always had a basketball court, we always had a playground equipment, and I was just wondering why we're spending $20,000 on, you know, chess boards and anything else, and trees and plants, and nothing planned for basketball or anything else down there, any playground equipment? Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can kind of answer that question for you. I attended one meeting a while back, and one of the things that was discussed down there was beautifying that area and leaving it so that people could sit in that area and enjoy the atmosphere down there.
So they don't want kids on it, is that what?
I guess that's part of the problem.
I guess that's part of the problem.
Like I said, if someone grew up there, and also the Atwood Park Improvement, maybe the Parks Commission could look at calling it the Jackman Park, since they tore down the Jackman School, which was on that for many, many years, as I live right across the street, and they could call it maybe Jackman Park in recognition of that man. Earl's.
There is a key, you remember that's a very strong advocate for this park, and he has had the community together in various meetings, and what the neighborhood has wanted was a park that more proposed. They did not want a park with playground equipment. That said, the, a lot of children are using the flat tennis court area, which is no longer a tennis court, to learn to ride bikes, to scooter, play street hockey, to learn, and that was a better use of that area. There still is a small basketball court there. So it really was through, an organic movement through the neighborhood. The south end playground with these discussions, that was a playground, and it looks like it will remain a playground, not on wood, and that's where the active playing commitment would be. So the neighborhood really wanted a park more suited to very smaller children learning to play some young sports and learning to ride bikes with equipment that's really already there. And I hope I spoke well enough with the advocate that's in the audience now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Occasionally, I'm voting against some of these initiatives, and it's not because I don't like parks, but it's because the original intent, we've strayed so far from the original intent of the CPC, and we've actually gone to the legislature, we state, not we, this community, to change the rules, as it were, and, you know, we're doing a lot of park maintenance with CPC money. Well, that's the job and obligation of our regular budget, and, you know, my concern is that we're finding this money that was earmarked for very specific uses to become our budgetary use for parks, and that's why when we talk about park improvements under CPC, I'll be voting against.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? No? Who knows? Nine, open space reserved, $100,000 requested, $50,000 recommended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Newburyport High School Phase One and Two, $250,000 requested, recommended $150,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Councilor Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I do have a hard time with this, mainly because 10 years ago, we redid the high school, we did a major renovation up there. A lot of things were taken off of the original proposals for that program, and I believe that this is one of them. Some piecework was done to make it look better, but in the spirit of taking care of things that we have presently, I will vote to approve this, but I hope that the overall lesson was learned from the high school project when we get into public projects like this.
No, by all means.
Councilor Collins?
I agree with the intent of what Counselor Solomon is saying, and also have to recall the time that Counselor Jones and I both sat on the building committee. Through the value engineering process, we had to whittle down, once we understood the amount that we had compared with the amount of money that was going to be required to do everything, there were things that we really wanted to do, and should have been done, had the money, but we couldn't do it at the time. And we had to prioritize them. This is one that fell a bit off the bottom. Now, I don't frankly recall if either Counselor Jones or I voted in favor of that particular deletion or not, but I'm glad to vote for it now. And let's recall that 10 years is a fairly long period of time. If you did, if you deferred maintenance on a portion of your house for a period of 10 years, you would suffer. If we have deferred maintenance, and I'm not saying that that's the case here, but I think over 10 years, we should expect to get some fairly substantial on a building that size, a public building that size, it was intensively used, bills like this to maintain the public properties that are our responsibility to maintain. So I'm going to go with this, I encourage all of you to.
Earl's.
This is where it will be slightly unconventional. I don't mean to do any sleight of hand here. I would like to table this. The Bartlett Mall Commission has a price tag of about $60,000 to do work that has to be done for the public safety. What I'd like them to do is give a chance to go back to the CPC, give them a chance to go back to CPC and present their case. This could be a whole, this is a large sum of money, that we could use $60,000 in an emergency basis, and the CPC Chair has said they would consider an emergency measure to go back. I would call the Bartlett Mall the condition of that pond in emergency. I'd like to just think about it. Make no motion tonight. I don't think two weeks or even a month is going to stall this project. I just want you to let them speak their case. Let them go to the CPC, talk about what they need. The CPC may not recommend it, and we can go back out of business as usual. Just a placeholder. So that's why I'm not doing sleight of hand. It's slightly unconventional, I understand that, but just saying, wait a minute, there may be something a little bit more necessary at this point.
Councilor Collins.
Well, I haven't really processed what you've said. I'm just checking my notes, just to put it out on the table, that CPA funding will be combined with the school department budget item of $80,000 for the first two phases of the project. So there's an additional 80 in that, and it's a four-phase project, and according to my notes, it's billed out at about $567,000 for the full phasing.
Mr. President, one of the questions we had is where would this be in the school's capital budget, and I don't know if somebody from the school department or somebody from CPC or the planning department wants to talk about that. I mean, I certainly think the Bartlett Mall issue is a pressing one. I'm not sure why rating this particular pot of money, and there are other large items in here as well, some we have no choice about, but I think, you know, if there's already money, $80,000 set aside from the school department budget to do Phases One and Two, and then if we start tinkering around, you know, then we're going to end up delaying that project. This was also a project that we, as a council, looked at about two years ago on a site visit to the Brezner and Nauchol and the high school with then Assistant Superintendent Deidre Farrell, and I think we remember what the condition of those pillars in the front was, and it wasn't good, and that was at least two years ago. So I don't know if somebody from the school department wants to speak to that, what is actually trying to be accomplished, if that's all right with the president.
Steve Burgholm, Director of Facilities for the Schools. The $150,000 that the CPC is recommending to combine with the $80,000 that we already have will go towards Phase One of this project, which is the very front-center portion of the building, including those columns and the cupola. Phase Two is moving out to both the left and right of that. Our original request was for $250,000, and that would have been enough to do Phase One and Two together. So the $150,000 will allow us to do Phase One. We've designed this project so that each phase is a standalone project, so that were the, you know, if we get enough for one phase, that's not going to affect the next phase. Does that answer your question, Counselor Cameron?
It's helpful. Councilor Earl's.
Although it appears that way, I'm not trying to pick one project against the other. I'm not saying that high school does not need work. I'm just saying that there's a priority list we have, and if we could just wait and get more information. I'm not saying that you have to vote one way or the other, but what's the problem getting more information? Allow a board to make a pitch to another board, and let that board even get a filter before they come to us. That's all I'm asking. In two weeks, they may come back and say, you know, we don't see the urgency in Bartlett Mall. Let them come back and say those words, perhaps. So I'm not looking to defund it, I'm looking just to stall the vote until the CPC, until the Bartlett Mall can meet with the CPC, and the CPC can get back to us. That's all I'm looking for. DeSette, please do it.
Good evening, Mike DeSette, Chair of the CPC. On this specific issue, two things, one particular to Counselor Earl's statement, and that is on the amended project number eight that was passed tonight, the project description carries with it a particular condition to the distribution of the appropriated amount, $12,000 for the removal of the algae in the Mall, pond. And that is full funding obtained for the estimated cost of that scope of work, which is $60,000, full funding being obtained so that that project can be accomplished and completed, and that money applicant seeking out, and I believe at the time, he came to us and talked about changing the purpose of the $12,000, the intent was to both fundraise and come to this body and look for the funding that they needed. So with that context, I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee, I don't want to necessarily foreclose any coming back, but I believe I can safely say that the sense of the committee was not to 100% fund this project for this park. That's not to say that, you know, we don't revisit things. Secondly, about that, it wouldn't necessarily require the tabling of the high school project because there is, we do not recommend 100% of the available funds. We have a cushion, because we're constantly afraid of recommending more than we have. So, you know, I am not sure that there's $50,000 there, but there's something probably less than that that would be available even if the high school project was not tabled and held in advance. The second important thing I'd like to say about the high school project before, while you're considering and talking about it, is I noticed on the recommended appropriation language for that project that in error, we forgot to include the mandatory language when we're giving, when we're appropriating monies from CPA funds for historic preservation, and that is that the structure receive a preservation restriction. So in addition to that appropriation for the high school would require the high school building receive a preservation restriction. The assumption was, and I checked it out today, the assumption was that the building was already subject to one, but apparently it's not. So that was an error on the part of the committee, and we would not have a choice there. That has to go with, the RIT PR has to go with.
Counselor Dervin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand Counselor Earl's intent here, but I don't think this should be holding up the hostage for the high school project. You know, if it is a problem right now, and it's a public safety issue, the notes function should be coming out in free cash, somewhere from the mayor's department to take care of this right now. And I don't think we should be holding any of the people that are hostage that have gone through the process of stating their case of what their needs are. I think we should just be taking care of this now and moving on to some other better solution for the Bartlett Mall.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. In fairness to the school department, and to be clear, the high school construction project ended very badly. The contractor failed. We threw the contractor off. We went through years of mediation and threats of litigation to finish that up. We didn't pay them all of the money that we originally bonded for because we held back money. What's happened is that it's not that we value engineered or forgot or didn't do a good job on it. Flat out, the contractor failed, and now, even though the money withheld is long gone to fix any number of other things that were shoddy done in that process, and I will say this, the contractor that did the work is no longer in business under his corporate entity that he used here, although certainly they're still out there trying to fool communities into hiring him. And we did the best we could to salvage that school, get it open in a timely fashion, even though it was late. 10 years ago, this was, we were all very, very aware of what a difficult situation we were in. For 10 years, that woodwork has not been completed, it's not been, it was not protected in the renovations as it should have been. This is certainly not the only flaw that we found in the high school. It's unfortunate, and if there's any educative tool that Newburyport High School has given us, it should be how we, as a building committee and as a community, deal with the construction that we're undertaking now. This should be a lesson learned. Maybe there's a couple of times that we hadn't fully learned that lesson. I can tell you that the current school building committee is painfully aware of what we intend to get out of the contractor before they get their last check. And we won't be back here 10 years from now looking for CPC money to fix what didn't get done.
Councilor Earl's.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to Mr. Burgholm, once again, I forgot to ask you when you were up there. The original request to the CPC was for $250,000. The amended amount before us via CPC is for $150,000. So question is, what happens to the other $100,000 that would not be funded out of your original request? Is that going to be folded into some future CPC amount, or?
Yeah, the $100,000 would be for the Phase Two part of the project, and we would need to find a funding source for that sometime in the future. Like other projects, we would probably go back to the CPC for additional funding in subsequent years to fund that.
Thank you. Do you want to call the question? Call the question or continue discussion. I move the question. It was to approve $150,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Eleven, National Register signage. Requested amount $6,500. CPC recommends $6,500.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
No.
One no. Little River Trail kiosk. Requested amount $8,000. Recommended amount $8,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Historic landscape preservation acts in common. Requested amount $36,630. Recommended amount by CPC, $20,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? City Hall debt payment, $195,187.50.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Open space debt payment, $128,818.75.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
FY14 administrative costs, $12,000.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Number three, Affordable Housing Trust. Recommend, requested amount $200,000. Recommended amount by CPC, $75,000.
Point of order, did we already not vote on that separately? I recuse myself on that one.
Likewise with
Likewise for, great.
Did we deal with eight?
We did deal with eight.
Deal with eight? That's everything.
That is everything.
One committee item, nothing else to report.
Thank you. General Governor.
Move to remove order number one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve?
Which one? Read the order, please.
Campaign finance reports. Let me make sure we've got it. Municipal forms, website.
What's that?
Municipal forms, website posting.
Yes.
That the city council hereby orders, the city of Newburyport shall post on its website in an accessible place the campaign finance reports, municipal forms, which are submitted by candidates for mayor, city council, and school committee. Reports to be posted shall include the current year and previous three years submitted, Counselor Edward C. Cameron.
Motion to approve.
We had just discussion.
Second it's discussion. Sorry.
Favor?
Who would be responsible for this? As soon as the city of Newburyport, there's a lot, I'm sorry, the city of Newburyport, is it assumed the clerk? Is it assumed the mayor?
Clerk. Counselor Cameron?
I didn't know this was coming out tonight. I submitted this last year, and this is somewhat happening to a degree. It would be the clerk's office in putting those reports in PDF form and attaching them to the website.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Anything else?
Item number two, remove, motion to remove
You can take some out collectively, probably two through eight. That will be okay with you?
Fine with me, it'll save us a lot of air.
I doubt it.
Two through eight, removed from committee? All in favor? Foe?
Move to approve?
You have to take them individually out.
Collectively?
Collectively, there were some changes, so you have to read the changes.
Yeah, I guess we do it one at a time.
Two dash thirty?
Yes.
Insert a new section, two dash thirty, performance of duties of mayor upon absence or disability. If the mayor is absent or unable by reason of sickness, disability, absence from the city, or other cause, perform duties of the office. The president of the city councils shall be the acting mayor and perform said duties in accordance with section three dash eight of the charter submitted, Councilors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Motion approved.
Second.
Further discussion? Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. These next set are all in conflict with the new charter. The current ordinances that are on the books are in conflict with the new charter. So, these are all recommendations to change them. So, we're going to be deleting and then installing the new wording.
So, ordinance four, roll call, please.
Motion approve two dash thirty. Counsel Earl's? Counsel Harquist?
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag?
No.
Counsel Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Daravan?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Motion to remove.
I removed it.
Oh, we already did. Motion to approve item number three.
Section dash two twenty-nine?
Special meeting.
Would you like me to read it, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Two dash twenty-nine, special meetings. A, special meetings of the city council shall be held at the call of the president or at the call of any six or more members for any purpose by causing a notice of the meeting to be delivered in hand or to the place of business or residence of each member of the city council. This notice shall, except in emergency, of which the president shall be the sole judge, shall be delivered at least 48 weekday hours in advance of the time set and shall specify the purpose or purposes for which the meeting is to be held. Copy of the notice shall immediately be posted. B, the mayor may at any time call special meetings of the city council for any purpose by causing a notice of the meeting to be delivered in hand or to the place of business or residence of each member of the council. This notice shall, except in emergency, of which the mayor shall be the sole judge, be delivered at least 48 weekday hours in advance of the time set and shall specify the purposes or purpose for which the meeting is to be held. Copy shall be immediately posted. Submitted Councilors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Hirsag?
Thank you, Mr. President. A question. If an emergency meeting, why deliver it in hand and why not deliver it by email, which I believe every counselor today and in the future would have? Just a question.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And if I'm, you know, trying to remember back in my foggy memory our rules without having them immediately to hand, I think that this is actually in conflict with council rules now. So, I think that, I think we have several different things, and perhaps for brevity's sake, what we should be discussing is rather than reading this new ordinance in total, we should be looking at what the changes from the existing ordinance is. What is the line we're amending? Or was that a complete change of the existing ordinance? And I'm not sure on that point.
Counsel, you have some of the changes there?
I got them right here, yes. The changes would be, the language in the original ordinance is very simple. Special meeting of the city council may be called by the mayor at any other time than that mentioned in this article, blah, 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 blah. What we are actually doing is we're tightening the wording and setting aside a specific amount of time for these meetings to be held, which some of that language is currently in the current ordinance. If that answers your question.
Some is in the ordinance, some is in the rules, council rules.
Okay. I think it's just the ordinance.
It's just in the rules.
Correct. I don't see it in the rules. Sorry, Mr. President. Counsel Earl's?
Section eight, I have no problem with, because it says the president can call a meeting in an emergency and foregoing the 48 hours. The president will be elected by his body, so there's some form of trust there. 20 years from now, we don't know what the political landscape will look like, and for the mayor to be able to convene this body together in emergency, meaning at a moment's notice, can be picking and choosing people who are in town at any given moment for a certain vote. The president calling meeting is very different, part of this body. The mayor, I need to exclude that line. I don't see, I see the conflict of interest there. I think a 48-hour notice is fine. I think if the mayor spoke to the president, the president sees the wisdom in it, that's the way it should happen. But that should not just be that the mayor has such power. Let's look at 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 50 years from now, what does the political landscape look like? Just rationally speaking, if we eliminate that line, I'm all in favor. And the mayor should have the 48-hour notice. That's no problem. Just want to give her the clause where no notice may be given in an emergency declared by that office.
Counsel Cronin?
Just a question is, how do we waive the open meeting law notice if, isn't there supposed to be a, by state statute? So, I don't, this seems to be in conflict unless there's something I don't know. Which is very, very obvious.
Be hard to believe, I guess. So, it sounds like we better table this for more discussion?
Yeah.
Motion to table? All in favor? Foe? Two sixty-two, dash sixty-two?
Yep. Item number four, residency requirement.
Unless otherwise allowed by law, regulation, or ordinance by this chapter, all members of multiple-member bodies must be residents of the city at all times during their entire term of office. If a member of a multiple-member body removes from the city during the term for which appointed, such seat shall be immediately deemed vacant and filled in a manner provided for in section three dash three of the charter. Councilors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this one is really important. It does spell out exactly what's supposed to happen if somebody, first of all, you have to be a member of the community, a resident of the city. And secondly, when you move out, the seat is vacated, and I think that's a very important step in this ordinance.
Counsel Connell?
Yes, I'm just pointing something out that appears to be a scribbler's error. I'm going to ask the clerk to look at the third line, which reads, if a member of a multiple-member body removes from the city, should that read moves from the city? And if that's a scribbler's error, can the clerk make that correction without action for the council?
Any further discussion? Roll call?
To approve two dash sixty-two, Counsel Earl's?
Yes.
Counsel Harquist?
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag?
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Two dash three twenty-six?
Yep. Move for approval.
Second.
Item number five.
Insert a new section, two dash one twenty-six, commencing with the inauguration of the mayor in January 2014. Continuing thereafter, the annual salary of the mayor shall be $98,000 plus $3,000 annual expense allowance. Submitted Councilors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Discussion? Counsel Jones?
What I just heard is that that is the set fee, and unless this ordinance is amended at a later date, that's the maximum that the mayor will be paid.
Correct.
The wording states that that is the maximum that they will be paid under this ordinance without an amendment, correct?
Well, I read it. Shall be. Further discussion? Roll call?
To approve two dash one twenty-six. Counsel Earl's?
Yes.
Counsel Harquist?
Yes.
Counsel Hirsag?
Yes.
Counsel Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
No.
Counsel Sullivan?
President.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Daravan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Ordinance passes first reading.
Two dash one twenty-eight?
Departmental records to be kept. Employee records amend by adding the following paragraph to the end of two dash one twenty-eight. Such records kept by a department head under this section shall be consistent with those maintained by the director of human resources as specified in the city charter. Notwithstanding the provisions of this section, the official personnel records of all city employees shall be considered to be those compiled and maintained by the director of human resources. Submitted Councilors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Motion approved.
Justice? Wasn't there something added to this someone remember? Changed or something? Guess not.
No, I think what you're referring to, Mr. President, is that in the past, the department heads have been allowed to, according to the old ordinance, the head of each department of the city shall keep an accurate record of the affairs of the city coming under his jurisdiction, either by himself or by a person in his department. When I was serving on the fire department, I think Mayor Carrier was in office at the time, and she was trying to make appointments to promote some individuals out there. And some of the files, the personnel files, were in city hall. Some of them were at the fire station. This, I believe, brings all of these files under the direction of the director of human services.
Jones?
And by passing this, we codify the requirement that a human resources director and/or department is a statutory requirement of the city.
Counsel Hirsag?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just ask, I don't know who the right person is, just for my own clarification, my review of the charter is, I haven't read every word of it. The, is this city? Is this city hall specific, or does this also include the school department? In terms of the director of human resources? Thank you.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I might just make a general statement about some of the things that we're doing here, we're codifying in law what are normally considered to be functions of administrative direction. And it's been a concern of mine that we're using the charter to dictate the day-to-day management of city hall and its situations like this, where it may be all the rage today to have human resource directors, but we're codifying something, and I'm concerned that we're using our laws and ordinances, which should be considered long-term law and the tact by which a community operates, and we're using it for really administrative functions, and I'm uneasy about that. I've been uneasy about that in the crafting of these changes, and now looking at the way these ordinances lay out, you know, I can see the devil in the detail now.
Counsel Cronin?
I would perhaps ask that this be tabled, because as I'm looking at this, records can be kept by a department head, but they have to be consistent with human resources. And what happens if they aren't? And it just seems very cumbersome to me to have two sets of books. I understand that, you know, you may have some department head scrutiny, so to speak, but what if there's an attaboy in there that's not at city hall? And as everybody knows, you know, 100 attaboys is one bad letter. And what if the bad letter's not in there? Does that now break up the disciplinary process or the promotion process? We're tying ourselves up in red tape, so I would ask that this be tabled and maybe looked at a little bit closer.
For a second? No, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Foe? Tabled. Thank you.
Item number seven.
Is that five dash forty-two? Forty-two, yep.
Term of office. Inspector of Buildings shall hold office for three years unless sooner removed by the mayor in accordance with section three dash four A of the charter. Submitted Councilors O'Brien and Sullivan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Hirsag?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to Counsel Sullivan. What is the current language?
The current language really isn't much different. The old lang, well, the current language is the inspector of buildings shall hold office for three years unless sooner removed by the mayor and the city council. The ordinance proposal is the inspector of buildings shall hold office for three years unless sooner removed by the mayor in accordance with three dash four A of the city charter.
Thank you. City charter took a lot of power away from the city council. Counsel Jones?
Mr. President, is this unique to the inspector of buildings, or is this every department head that falls on? I mean, what just happened? What is the, we have a number of appointed department heads. Now, granted, they're all covered under a collective, or most, or some, or, I don't know, some of them are covered under a collective bargaining agreement by the Teamsters and some aren't because they collectively, uncollectively bargain, but they also seem to be set up under an entirely different set of rules as to how they'll be managed and disciplined. If, I mean, we have an ordinance change for the inspector of buildings, which gives wide-ranging power to the mayor to hire and fire. What about the assessor? Or the IT director? Or the DPW director? Or the fire chief? Or, why him? Why is this in front of us? Why aren't they all in front of us? And why is the city council divesting itself of its obligation prior? I mean, you all remember, well, not all of you, but I certainly remember the discussion we had here about getting rid of the DPW director and how it was presented and what we did and how it faced up when the lawyers walked into the room and threatened us all. Great night. At the end of the day, this is supposed to be about consistency. What is the consistent rule about department heads? Why is this single department head being affected by this change of ordinance? And what's the condition of all the rest of them? Fairness and equity is what we have to be looking for.
Counsel Connell?
I think the council raises an excellent point. And perhaps if we understood, perhaps the sponsor tells what section three dash four A says, so we understand this in proper context?
Yeah, and I don't have that in front of me, so I can't tell you.
Counsel Cronin?
In which case, I think it's a, would be an undeformed vote where we'd act on this right now, and I would prefer to see a table.
Second that. All in favor? Foe? Tabled. Want to table the next one, too?
Yeah, might as well. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foe? Anything else coming out?
Are we taking out item nine?
Yep.
Move to remove item nine from the committee.
All in favor? Foe?
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion? Want to read it?
What would you like me to do, Mr. President? Want me to paraphrase?
Sure. You want to read it all? Probably half time, so I might as well.
Let me skim. Attached is a municipal agreement for the regional delivery of veteran services under Mass General Law's forty, section four A. After meeting with officials from Newbury, Merrimack, Amesbury, and Salisbury for the past several months, we have reached a consensus on implementing this regional approach. By the way, this is a memo from Peter Lombardi to the present members of city council. Since 2010, MGL one fifteen ten has provided a mechanism allows municipalities to former regionals veterans district. Specifies that districts shall be comprised of one city and surrounding towns. Accordingly, we must initiate a home rule petition to allow the two cities, Amesbury and Newport, to participate in this newly proposed Heinz Shea Veterans District, combined population of fifty thousand, et cetera. Once the act is approved by the legislature, the participating communities will then submit an application to Mass Department of Veteran Services seeking formal recognition as a veterans' district. Before that application is submitted, the city council will have to approve a different, slightly revised intermunicipal agreement that is more closely aligned with the statutory provisions of chapter one fifteen. Meantime, Newport will lead community under this, the lead community under this interim arrangement with Kevin Hunt fulfilling all duties as the veteran service officer. Each community will pay in apportionment based on the population.
It will save the city approximately fifteen thousand dollars. What's wish of the council?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Earls.
So this is an interim, intermunicipal agreement?
Right.
And will dissent to the legislature for a home rule petition. And if it fails to guard a home rule petition, how does this come back? Is it no longer, does that end the interim state and is now the funk?
Counsel Sullivan.
Mr. President, in all fairness, we had a meeting prior to several other meetings that we had tonight, and I do believe that there are still a lot of questions to this. I do believe that the, that the veterans do need the services, but I think in the, in, in all fairness, I would move to table this until we can have further discussions.
Before that motion is made, I'm not, I'm not looking to table this, that wasn't my point at all. It was a question because I had to leave early to, to attend another meeting. I'm willing to let this go forward. If this is not the final say, I know these things can take quite a while at the State House, and I'd like to move this along because of all its... Very good. I had simple questions. I, I hope that if it comes back, and I hope we can answer for that now, just want to know, if it comes back, failed in the home rule petition, where are we with this? Are we now still stuck in this kind of muddy water? I'm hoping not. I'd like it to go forward, because it will take a while at the State House.
Lombardi.
Counsel, just to respond to that specific question, so there are two things before you. One is a home rule petition, and the other is an intermunicipal agreement. The intermunicipal agreement is under Mass General Law, chapter forty, section four A, and that is an agreement that can stand for a twenty-five-year period. Separate from that process, we would file a home rule, home rule petition, which if that was approved by the legislature, would then require an additional new intermunicipal agreement be approved by the council, which would lead to the formation of a district.
If I may address...
Go ahead.
I, I thought the issue was we now have two cities, which we can't have without home rule petition in this agreement. So, please bear with me, does this interim agreement include the two cities, or does this exclude Amesbury?
No, it includes all five communities that are proposed, Amesbury, Newburyport, Salisbury, Merrimack, and Newbury.
Comes back...
Yes.
Failed from the legislature, the State House, they don't approve our home rule petition, what happens to this agreement?
Right now, there's, there's a formal districting process through, that the state created through chapter one fifteen. That's what we're applying the home rule petition for. We have the ability on our own, separate from that districting process, to agree to an intermunicipal agreement, which is just under chapter forty, section four A. Those can stand for up to twenty-five years, so this agreement will hold true whether or not the, the home rule petition is approved by the legislature.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the major, the major difference here, the intermunicipal agreement is a standalone entity. However, the difference between the district and the intermunicipal agreement is that Mr. Hunt and, and his clerical people will remain Newburyport city employees, whereas if the, if the home rule petition passes, we'll have to alter that because a board or commission will be installed, and they will be the overseers of service for a community with representation from, or a series of communities with representation from each community. So, this intermunicipal agreement allows Newburyport to, and maybe I don't want to say hold the whip hand, but, but in effect, at least hold the reins, whereas the creation and, and, and there's a separate initiative before us that's still in committee regarding the home rule petition. So, this puts, puts an agreement in place with Newburyport in control of how that's going to be, you know, with the, with the consent of the participants, as opposed to moving to a separate board with partial representation on the part of the city of Newburyport.
Thank you, Counsel Jones.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
This is the motion to approve. Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Harquist.
Yes.
Counselor Hershog.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Daravan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
I believe there's...
Point of education?
Nothing at this time.
License and permits.
Wish to move after seating, say kitchen bar. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Wish to approve. Second.
Counselor Earls.
License and permit met, and we unanimously approve this petition for outdoor seating.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad we've approved it because, of course, everybody's been sitting on the sidewalk for the past five weeks down there in front of SEA, and you'll hear me probably say the same thing in a minute about somebody else. I'd like to understand how those things got set up without council approval, and, and further, I'd kind of question, now that, now that we've given them permission, who's policing them, and the fact that we didn't police them and they went and did it without permission kind of speaks to it.
Thank you. Counselor Earls.
I, I, I have to say, this, this comes out of the fact that we demand to have one meeting a month in the summertime. Business still happens in the summertime. We have a, a petition to us September twenty-second. We have no option but to approve it or fail. We can't even talk about it because we decided to take vacation. I was against that. That's why this type of work happens. And going forward, I hope the new body would consider meeting two times a month in the summer. It's a busy city. Things happen. That's why we're in this position where they, they sort of say, are we going to lose business because the council decides not to meet? I don't blame them. I don't say it's appropriate, I don't say it's right, but I certainly can see their point of view.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
No.
Wish to move after seating Brian, twenty-five State Streets. Second.
Discussion. Counselor Earls. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Two noes.
Two noes.
Motion to remove item coffee.
Second.
Seating required.
That sounds rather harsh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion two. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, motion approved.
Second.
Go ahead.
This is a new petition. They do not have a building yet, so they're way ahead of the game here. This has, it's really, it's a very simple one. There's no obstructions whatsoever. The petition was here tonight, and I, again, we met, we nothing in favor of this petition.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Anything else?
Motion to remove selfish management plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Earls.
License and permit met tonight. Again, unanimous three's there that we approved this plan. The harbor master was here to discuss how it would be implemented, how that it's really winged and studied, they're going to look at it again. It sounds very favorable, looks like an harbor enterprise fund can stand to make a few more thousand dollars in this, which of course is good for the harbors, for the voters of Newport. And again, we said, we voted unanimously yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Neighborhood and city services? Planning and development?
Not a thing.
You will.
Oh, yeah.
Public safety?
Nothing in report.
Public utilities?
Nothing at this time.
Rules committee?
Yeah, move to remove item one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Motion approved, item one.
Read it, please.
Isn't that what we said?
Thank you. I write in... Rule eighteen A, may I all comment? There shall be established a designated time during each meeting of the city council in which the mayor may address the council. The procedure for this is as follows. One, should the mayor wish to speak before the council, the mayor shall provide notice prior to the meeting to the present city council. One point one, prior knowledge shall be defined as notice at any time prior to the president of city council calling a meeting to order. Two, paragraph one of this rule may be waived by motion with a simple majority vote of the council allowing the mayor to speak during a meeting should the need arise. Three, mayor shall be provided with a total of five-minute time allotment at the conclusion of public comment and prior to the consent agenda. Three point one, this designated time must be related to agenda items. Three point two, nothing in this rule prohibits the city council by majority vote to allow the mayor further comment. Four, mayor will be observed, afforded reserved seating in the first row of the bench seating in the council chambers. Submitted Counsel Robert J. Cronin.
Counsel Cronin.
Thank you. This is a result of the charter changes, and what this does is continue the orderly meeting of city council. Nothing in here prohibits the mayor from speaking at any time with the will of the council. Certain major topics such as state of the city, budget presentations, or whatever other presentation that might come forth would certainly be an agenda item anyway, so that, that area is addressed. So, the rest of the rule speaks for itself, so that's, that's where we're at.
The rules committee voted? How was the vote, the rules committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, the vote was three, nothing in rules.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Hershog.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question to, I guess, the sponsor. Earlier tonight during the general government committee section, city council approved a new ordinance specific to, in the chance that the mayor is unavailable, the president of city council becomes mayor, and so I just wonder if this particular item would cause any conflict.
Counsel Cronin?
No, I don't, I don't see any conflict at all.
Counsel Jones.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I guess, I guess I need to, to say again, the new charter has certainly changed the structure of government in the city, and, and while it seems like not in a big way, the very blending of the, the separa, or the, the, the lack of separation that we're approaching between the executive and legislative branches of government should cause us concern. And, and I don't mean to suggest to anyone that we're in a situation where the monarch will begin beheading the House of Commons. We're not, certainly not quite there...
House of Lords.
Hold on. Oh, the House of Lords, we've gotten an upgrade. But, the deliberative charge of the legislative branch of government is separate of the executive decree branch of government. And while it may seem to behoove the discussion of initiatives, ideally, the ability to separate the executive and legislative branches of government are what allow for free and open debate. Blending them creates a, could potentially create a condition where people would feel a reluctance to engage in their open deliberation and could cause a lessening of the effectiveness of government, or in fact, a slanting of power. And, and it's, without placing individual personalities and looking at this holistically, our, our charge is to look at the ordinances we pass, not for the instant that is before us, but for the long run of the action of our legislative endeavor. And I, I, I continue to be concerned and raise this point of caution that we're, we're diluting something that for the past two hundred and fifty years has proved to be an effective way of doing government, and that's clearly the separation of the executive and legislative branches. And my fear is that we are going to see a more mayor-centric form of government here, and that may well be to the detriment of the voice of the people.
Thank you, Counsel Jones. Counselor Connell.
Yeah, I, I look at this, and I scratch my head and wonder, why? What's broken?
Counsel Charter.
And, and again, I, and I disagree with the elements of charter, and, and for that reason, I want to vote against this. I mean, it seems to me that what this does is, is kind of constrain us with rules that appear unnecessary. I, I disagree with the charter. I think that the council president has discretion to invite a mayor in or to prevent a mayor from speaking under, under certain circumstances, and that, that changing the, the, the rules in this manner actually restricts the ability, or in, in my mind, I'm perfectly content with the way the council president, or a council president should operate in this regard. Generally speaking, under Robert's rules, the convener or the moderator of the meeting has that kind of discretion at hand. And I don't see that, that this does anything but complicate a relationship that should be fairly straightforward and, and negotiable between the council president and mayor. So, I'm going to vote against this. This strikes me as, as a solution looking for a problem that doesn't exist.
With, with Counsel Cameron first and Counsel Jones, I'm sorry.
I, I'm going to agree with Counselor Jones, but in a different way. I actually, I actually do like many elements of the new charter. I agree it does give the mayor, certainly by virtue of a four-year term, potentially more, more power and clout. And I actually think this rule, although I was, you know, not terribly interested in it at our last meeting on August twelfth, I actually think it helps provide a little bit more structure. I, I've not been comfortable with, you know, right now, the mayor does participate in meetings kind of by osmosis, by, with no, there's no formal vote by the council often, certainly it's at the, at the agreement of the city council president, but this, this makes it a little bit more formal, and if we need some information that cannot be provided by the mayor's staff, and we want to call upon him or her, we would need to waive the rules and, and make a motion and vote that. I think that puts a little bit more of a barrier. I do agree, you know, we need to be in here deliberating what we as a legislative body need to be doing without, you know, a, a mayor looking over our shoulder necessarily being in the room, and I think this puts some, some boundaries on that, so.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the language in the charter effectively grants the mayor free access, and what this does is, the language in the charter states that the mayor may speak at the council irrespective of our agenda. And what this does is place, a place for the mayor under the terms of the new charter. You know, the, the charter states that the mayor effectively puts the mayor on even footing with the counselors, which throws out the balance of deliberation. While it doesn't say that she votes, it says that she... While it doesn't say that she votes, it says that she participates, you know, and, and is not held to discussion of agenda items. Gives free rein to the executive authority to come into the council and use the legislative branch to form an open discussion without agenda restriction. And that runs absolutely contrary to all of the public comment rules that this council has lived by, it, that we set up. It runs contrary to the way that we deliberate. It even runs contrary to Robert's rules of parliamentary procedure. And so therein lies the rub. An unbridled view of the charter gives free rein of the executive branch over the legislative branch, and this offers us a modicum, although it doesn't make me comfortable because I still feel that the separation should be more formal, but at least it sets some ground rules for how we will proceed in our deliberations and discussions. So this is, this is the best fix to a bad situation.
Counselor Cronin?
And another, another shocker of the night, I do agree with Counselor Connell.
You don't try. The wonders never cease.
The wonders will never cease.
Lot of fun tonight.
However, this is not a, a fix to something that isn't broken. This is a fix to something that was thrust upon this council by the vote of the charter. And what the charter does say is that the city council can make reasonable rules that govern not only our behavior in here, but now the mayor's behavior in here. We are, we are a council of rules. We are a council of procedures on who can speak, when they can speak, how they can speak, who you address. We are just codifying this to bring our, our rules up to date, up to date with what is mandated by the charter of allowing the mayor access under our rules.
Counsel Sullivan?
I won't take up too much more of our time, but I, I do have a couple of things I need to say here. I, I haven't read the, the, the new charter in a little while. I don't know that the charter actually gives the mayor permission to speak. I may be wrong, but I know that the mayor is allowed to attend the meeting. It's up to the city council, I believe, to allow the mayor to speak. Again, I may be wrong. I haven't read it in a while. But I don't see a problem with these rules. I don't see a problem with the mayor sitting in the front row. I really don't. And, and it wouldn't intimidate me one bit if I was still on this council come January first. But I do have to say that if you can't say what you have to say in a five-minute time allotment, sit down and keep your mouth shut.
Counsel Hirsag?
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, I wish it not. I didn't mean you talking.
Did you mean anyone on this side?
No, no, no. I'm actually looking at the front row.
Counsel Hirsag, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, on the surface, I have no problem with this rule because there are waivers built in. However, earlier tonight, I am on record as voting against the implementation of section two dash thirty. If the mayor is absent or unable by various reasons to perform said duties, the president of the city council shall be the acting mayor. Therefore, in the circumstance that's the president of the city council or the acting mayor, rule eighteen A is moot because the mayor would be a voting member of the city council. I'm voting against this.
Then the mayor wouldn't have five minutes to speak. The city council president would be up here, so, I don't know. Say la vie. Any further discussion? Move the question. Roll call. Is to approve eighteen A. Rule eighteen A. Counselor Earls?
No.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes. To the rules. Now I'll take a motion to take the appointment of, that was on the table, off the table?
No move.
Paul Hogg?
Motion approved.
Counsel Hirsag, second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. Counselor Hutchinson?
I need to vote present on this if my stepson is working for Paul. Just give him time, so.
That's outrageous.
He said he wouldn't give him a raise, don't worry about it. Is he bringing home any clams?
We're going to fire him.
Might be.
We're going to fire him.
Any, any further discussion? Roll call, please. The appointment of Paul Hogg. Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
President.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
And I don't like clams, so don't worry about it. Now, for the good of the auto, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No move, no move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Do you want to say no to adjourn?
Okay.
It wasn't that bad.